We scheduled meeting of the regular council meeting for Wednesday, October 13th at 6:30 PM. Ms. Paul Rose.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Knappel.
Here.
Councilman Dotter.
Here.
Councilman Eagle.
Here.
Councilman Peters.
Here.
Councilman Patty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Mullins.
Okay, has everybody got a chance to read the minutes from September 2nd? If so...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Consideration of bills over 2,000? That's important.
We have our Wex bill which is $3,660.21. The FEMA bill for $7,205. And that is on our sewer plant that comes through every year.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do we have any Carthage citizens here who'd like to speak to any concerns? Okay, then we have the mayor's report. Couple things here just because this happened after our last meeting. The swimming pool had a fantastic season. Instead of, in spite of starting late, Sally did an amazing job as she always does. She brought in Rita Dickerson to have aerobics classes. It started from six women to about 20 something. They all wanted to come back next year, so it was a great season. We've got the temporary lights at the ball field. They're very thankful for that. We want to thank Tommy Pittman and Upper Cumberland for expediting that to get those up and running. If you haven't looked lately, when you go to Walmart, a few weeks back, it's been some time now, they put reflective turning lanes because everybody was saying it was hard to see those lanes in the dark. So as a safety measure, they came out. So if you're turning left off of Upper Berry onto 25, you've now got lights that will, on the road, that'll show you how to run in the same way coming out. Had a great report daily, a marker here with people from the Country Music Hall of Fame. His family came in from Chicago and Nashville. We had the author of his book, David Morton, who spoke about the biography. Great Walton Day Festival, as you all know. We're looking at Halloween Truck or Treat coming up on the 31st, so keep that on your calendar so everybody can buy the seven downtown. Got the Market Fest coming again on November 6th, Saturday, so we can know any vendors or taxi people, Saturday, November 6th. Ask them to sign up for the booze. It's gonna be really nice this time. We got some extra things for the kids and just a few little fun treats. We had a meeting with, a great meeting just afternoon with John Kelly Lish and some of the scout folks who set up for his grand opening. We won't tell it now, I'll let him announce that, but we've come up with a time and a special way to open and dedicate the park. And we want to thank him again for the amazing job he did on this dog park. So probably in the next day or two, he'll have announced one on his page about that and then we'll put it on our Facebook page too. We hope everybody will come out and support it because, again, he did an amazing job on this park. And we thank him very much. Something that Carthage, a lot of people have wanted for a long time, so that's really wonderful. We have, that's my report. Attorney Mullins, do you have anything you want to report on by noon? Attorney Mullins? He's so relaxing in the locker.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, yes. Uh-huh.
Okay. So, one thing that I'm working on is the walking trail. The mayor notified me that the contracting company has not completed the walking trail, or at least the last I knew, had not completed the walking trail. Based upon my looking over the contract and the completion date, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I believe the start date was somewhere June the something, the end of June. They had 90 days to have the trail completed. I think the end date would have been sometime towards the end of September. They haven't completed that. There's liquidated damages sections, basically, I'm gonna say this, this isn't legally correct, but what they are is penalties for not having it done. So I sent them a letter the other day. Yet to hear anything back on that. There was an issue that come up in the past few weeks about Upper Cumberland had installed a new utility pole in front of Robin Moore's office there. Ms. Moore was contending that when UCMC left the hole, there was water running in her basement. This was about a week ago, there was gonna be rain, whichever rain that was the last week or so. I plead bless, maybe Les was on vacation, somebody went up there and maybe they put some hot mix in it for a temporary fix. And UCMC's supposed to be contacting the city's contractor that you guys use to re-uncle the sidewalk. They're gonna be responsible for paying for all of that, so that's the last I knew about that. I guess the last pressing issue needs to be brought to your attention. I was informed by the mayor that there's a business in town that is currently operating that doesn't have a valid business permit. There was also an issue that, and I don't know, I've not seen it for myself, but pursuant to the last attorney's letter, that they were possibly drinking alcohol premises or serving alcohol premises without a valid liquor license. I believe that the Rose is building, I'm not sure what business it is there. I sent her, the owner of it, a letter, spent over 10 days ago stating that she needed to get some type of license to come to City Hall and apply for a permit if she wanted some type of liquor license. As of today, she hasn't, as far as I know, I spoke with her this morning, as far as I know, she hasn't obtained any type of license for that business. So our next avenue would be to cite her to city court. I guess let the city judge make a ruling on it as to whether or not the business can stay open. Or maybe he'll give her a timeframe and put in an order of how long she needs to obtain a valid license. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Alright, thank you. The next city recorder?
I have nothing for my office time unless you guys have questions.
Chief Davis, do you have for the police department?
Yes, ma'am. I don't have anything other than just the monthly report. If y'all have any questions for me, please feel free to ask. We're happy to help you anywhere.
Okay. In public work, what, Mr. Rose?
I don't have nothing. The starting lease truck up 90, so we're setting that lease. If y'all got any, write them out.
Okay, alright. Water and sewers, Derek?
Yeah, he's right there.
Oh, oh. I didn't, don't have the yellow one, I didn't recognize you.
Only thing I want to talk about is the, I run some numbers on the swimming pool as far as water usage. Before it was fixed, we used 3,200,000 gallons for a total cost of $20,800. After we got it fixed, we used 378,760 gallons for a cost of $2,462.
Wow.
So that saved the city $18,338.
Wow, that's great.
Wow.
That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Say how much we saved again, that's fantastic.
$18,338.
Wow, thank you.
That's paid for itself.
Just on water, yeah.
It will. That's really great. Really great.
What did that cost again, originally, the repair?
$281, I think it was.
$281?
$281.
About 15, 16 years, something like that, paid for itself?
Yeah, and plus...
Plus, fact, we're gonna have to close the pool down.
Yeah.
We couldn't, you know...
We'll have a longer season next year. Yeah, we'll have a much longer season. And I think in spite of everything, we did a really great job financially this year, so a lot of people should know. So thank you, that's good news. Okay. Rusty?
Here.
Okay. Alright.
Well, I was talking to Derek about the water savings, so I figured ours up. We went from the pouring gas...
It's like Steve, I didn't, should have been Steve, please.
We went from pouring gas to the bleach. And we're using about 1.3 million gallon a year less of water, so that's well over $10,000 a year we're saving the city.
Wow.
So you take what we did in the swimming pool, you're close to $30,000 a year savings, so... Other than that, I want to recognize Derek and Les. I had a, one of my main pipes in the plant yesterday, got three hoses in it. Called them, they come down with a band boom truck and helped me put a good Band-Aid on it to hold it for a while longer, so I appreciate their department coming down and building me out there.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you. Great. Is Chief Hyatt here?
Yes.
Okay. Then let's go to the engineer and grant reports. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna break them because we've got two different engineers, so if you don't mind, we'll start with Mr. Jones here. He's got three projects, so, Mr. Jones, are you on?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Okay. Take what, Will, do you mind muting and then we'll hear Mr. Jones or see him there?
I'll stop Mr. Jones right there.
Yeah, just...
Like the log.
Okay.
I think you gotta click on his picture.
It's supposed to come on the speaker. Can we hear you talk, Mr. Jones, please?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Alright, good deal. Alright, good deal. Okay, the first one, if you could tell us a little bit about the INI project, this pilot project we have going?
Yes, ma'am. So only INI project, as everybody knows, you do get approved, you have a project which is 50% principal forgiveness from SRF. We're working, we and George Currs are working together on that. We got received a proposal earlier today to get your flow monitoring equipment out, and we anticipate having flow monitoring equipment, in man, seven man holes around the first November. That will, once that flow monitoring is, we have some good flow monitoring data. That's gonna help us hone in on where to do smoke testing. So we're taking a very methodical approach at this because even though you have a loan which is for one certain number, which is for getting, our goal is to not spend that whole number. I think everybody, myself and everybody in that group included, would be very happy with that. We want to make sure that we get a good understanding of what's going on in your system and we help you all identify the areas in which we can remove this inflow and infiltration to lower the amount of flow going to where it's more a plant, take some of the pressure off, speed key, his style. But to do that, as I said, we're taking a methodical approach. So what's gonna happen there is we're gonna get some flow data, we're gonna start to see which basins, what areas in the city have really high flows when it rains. Once we're able to do that, then we're gonna be able to deploy people to do smoke testing. So from there, we're gonna be able to identify sewers that are connected to storms or broken cleanouts, you know, disfractured pipe, you know, and that's gonna help us, once we know, then that's gonna help us move into, okay, what needs to be corrected? You know, where does money need to be spent fixing these problems in order to get rid of this INI? So the whole process will really, I think you'll start to see some real progress and we'll be able to have some preliminary meetings and show you some of this data and stuff once we get into the spring. Because honestly, the first two to three months is just gonna be us getting a whole lot of data and being able to compile that data and start to look at and identify what parts of the system are the worst. You know, where are we seeing all of this extra flow come in that you have to treat and spend money on treating that nobody's paying you to take? So that's kind of where we are now. Like I said, in about two or three weeks, you're gonna see people start putting in flow monitors and then that data will become available in, you know, early spring, probably around March. I anticipate being able to really sit down and start presenting some information to the mayor and the council and staff on what's going on in your system and where we're seeing these flows and how we think you can best go about, you know, identifying which areas need to be worked on first. And at the end of this whole project, when everything is said and done, what you've got is you've got a report that identifies where all your flows are coming from, which areas and priorities for repairs, and you will have a design for an initial INI project in order to remove this extraneous water from the system. And that will be for the area that is deemed to be the highest priority, number one priority on the list. And so the next step will be to start actually having contractors come in, make repairs on manholes, make repairs on pipe, and keep this water from coming into the system.
And Mr. Jones, what we're kind of understanding from TDEC is once this pilot project is done, that sets us up to probably get some good grants to help with this because we have had this really amazing study at that.
Yes. Yes, all of this run-in work sets you up on all of the grants through the CPG, you know, any funding through community development block grants, future TDEC, SRF funds, these infrastructure funds that are coming out. This kind of information puts you into the forefront of being able to get a hold of that money and be able to apply that towards making improvements in the system. So it absolutely, you know, is gonna be, as I told the mayor one time, I said, you know, there's two typical approaches that are used when you have INI problems in systems. And in small systems, a lot of times, the approach is, let's fix the whole system. So if you go out and you fix the whole system, you've got 300 manholes, and we say, well, each manhole, you know, you assign a number to it, you know, you could spend three or four million dollars fixing the whole system. Through this INI study, you know, we may find that only a third of the system needs work, and so therefore, you know, you're able to really scale down how much it costs the town of Carthage in the long term, long term, because we went, if you went through the time to actually see where this flow is coming from and identify the areas that need to be repaired.
Okay, thank you. Then we're gonna skip down to two more that you have, then we'll be able to, if you want to stay around, you can, or if you want to get back to your vacation, either way. So the next one that we want to talk about is the water pump station, which was going to originally be the water tank that we converted over. Just, where are we with that? Just kind of briefly, where are we with that, please?
So, excuse me there. That project, we opened bids on that project tomorrow at 2 o'clock. That will be at Town Hall. And so right now, we've got six bidders for that project. Expect all six bidders turning in a bid. And we're just waiting to see, see where those numbers come in. I think everybody, you know, we go back to almost a year ago when we were talking about a water storage tank. A lot's changed in the economy since then with the cost of things, but we're, you know, we've got a lot of good bidders, we've got a lot of competition here, and I think, you know, we're gonna get a very competitive price. You know, and we'll see, we'll know exactly what that number is tomorrow. I have a bid open, too.
Okay, thank you. And then the third one we need to talk about is the Futuro Alley water line?
Yes, ma'am. We did open bids on that. I have a letter, I'm assuming everyone had a letter in their package. Your low bidder on that project was Isengard Construction Group, a bid of $168,000, approximately. Yeah, I talked to the mayor and staff about the bid, and it is the low bid. They are classified as a responsive bidder, there's no issues. We checked their references with other municipalities, other engineers. You know, other locations said that they had done, completed projects similar to this and in a time of mad, that they would work with them again. I know you all have used them in the past for some other projects. But I think based on what pricing for materials are gives today, right now, as compared to when we first thought about this project, which was almost two years ago, going through the SRF process, I do believe that this is a good bid, and I recommended in the letter to award the project. You know, I told the mayor, as far as keeping the contractor on time and getting the project done, that is, that falls under the responsibility of the engineering firm to make sure that the contractor is moving forward on the project. There are provisions in the contract, as with any contract, for liquidated damages and other provisions which allow us to, you know, get the contractor to move forward with the project. Believe that, you know, at this point, unless you all as council have an issue with the bid, that I would recommend award of the bid and the completion of the water line.
I think we have a question here.
What's, I got two questions. What's the timeline of the scope of work as far as that goes?
The timeframe on this bid, I apologize because I don't have the full book of records, I believe it was 150 days for completion of the contract from the date of the notice to proceed.
And what, what area is that gonna, is that gonna cause road closures for 150 days, or what's the...
No, sir. There will be a road closure as they go, as they work in, well, I don't want to say it's a road closure, there will be a reduction of traffic down to a single lane as they, in one area there on Main Street as we get rid of two dead-end water lines. And then the rest of the work will be moved to the Futuro Alleyway. So there will be some, you know, that alleyway itself will be closed to any through traffic while they're in there working with it, as it is such a small area.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Hope you enjoy your vacation.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Then the other, well, actually, four projects we're looking at. Miss Engineer, Mr. White, do you want to, you wanna start with the fire hall, Dave, excuse me?
That's fine. The fire hall, we done the pre-construction last week. The building itself's gonna be delivered on February the 25th, is when the steel will show up. We've got him a notice to proceed starting January the 3rd, is what we've got technically scheduled for that. That gives him time to get started, get the foundation done, and give him time to get the building finished in his timeframe that he's got to get the building done. It puts him in April, to the middle of Aprils, or the end of Aprils, when the timeframe is up on that. He says he'll be here in December. The notice to proceed is only, it's, the way the notice to proceed works is that's on before. So he can actually start before his days start counting on January the 3rd. But the steel building won't be here till the 25th of February. We knew that all along when they all bid, back in July, they was giving us a 30-week leak period on the building. So that's not, he's actually ahead of schedule than what we thought. But that, that's the date they give him for it to be on site. That's the fire hall, which one you want me to go to next?
Would you go to, this looks like the walking track, would you?
Alright, walking track. Tuesday, yesterday. Been a long week already. Yesterday, we came down here, they started working on the grading to finish the drainage issues that still exist down there. He went ahead and done the striping on the concrete for the ADA parking. He's put parking buffers in, he's put the ADA signs up. So everything is done except for what we would consider warranty work where you're coming back and fixing what you've done done. So he's actually in the process of fixing the grading on the park, so...
Has he clipped the holes in the paving?
Yes, they fixed some of them. I was aware there was some more.
Yeah, it was the pore.
So there'll be another, I mean, once he does this, we can walk through again, do another punch list and give you anything else that's left down there for him. That's got that as far as I know.
Okay. How about Main Street painting?
Main Street paint. We met with them Tuesday also. The contractor wanted to have a meeting, so we went ahead and had a meeting. Their concern is the water line going down Main Street. Their main concern is if y'all are wanting to do, fix that water line, they want it fixed before they pave. They're afraid it's gonna look bad on the town of Carthage and on their company if they come in here and pave that and then y'all come in a year later and dig it up. Also, there was some, they're wanting to do, one theory is to go in there and do casings under every side street, that way they're already there. They're good with that. I think the mayor was gonna look in to see if y'all could actually add that to an existing contract to do that, or bid that out separate to do those casings. That way they can pave and then depending on the line that's actually in the road, y'all can decide on that. So that was our concern.
I was under the impression we didn't have any water lines on Main Street.
It runs down a travel lane.
Not downtown, but on the Main Street, yeah.
The water line comes up Ward Avenue, returns and goes out Main Street. No, no water line in front of your businesses or nothing like that.
Or we're paving, there's, on the map, we looked, it was like two, three years ago. There were, where does, I thought it ended out there. You know, close to, before the bridge there.
Wait. We're talking about the north end?
The north end, okay.
From north all the way to some southern, is that right?
Oh, mother...
Smother.
Do you, can you, I know, I'm not trying to hold you to it, but in your mind, if we replace that water line, what would it kind of cost, any ideas?
A lot.
Nothing cheap.
It's nothing cheap, and it's a, it becomes a road job. If you put it back in the road, it's a road job. I mean, you've got to put all stone in there, and you've got to have your base paving and your topping paving, so it becomes, and that's their concern is, you know, if you put down this, if you spend this 223,000, and then you have to come back a year or two later and tear it up, I mean, it's gonna look bad on everybody. So, and I agree, they, and they also are gonna want to do something like those casings. You can't just put those casings in and come right behind them and pave, so there's gonna have to be some time for it to settle and let it get as compact as it can be before they pave it, or you're gonna have a deal. There's no, I don't care how good they are, it's gonna happen, so.
So Derek, didn't you guys run some estimating numbers?
Yeah. All the research I've done, it's, the going rate's usually about a billion dollars a mile. And I think that's seven tenths of a mile, so you're probably around $700,000 to replace the water line.
Which may be the one reason it has...
War have used the smother.
Yeah. We're gonna definitely have to find some grants.
So you're saying from, sorry, if you, Steven's first, I'll call, let's go, Steven. I'll take whoever.
What I'm saying is the company themselves suggested that we don't pave it until we do the water line, right?
If you're gonna do it. They won't, they're basically, I know you don't know, but they're saying like, if you know you're gonna have to fix this thing, they're trying to look out for your best interest. And I, we appreciate that, and from my understanding, we're gonna have to replace that water line. Is that not a correct statement?
Neat.
Les, Derek, y'all could probably ask this best, but it's my opinion that those water lines are pushing 100 years old.
Yeah.
And why pave over a 100-year-old line? Sorry, go ahead. Apologies.
So you're saying from war to fight, there's a water line?
From war to smother.
Okay. But from war down to the bridge, there's no water line to work with?
Water line goes across Second Avenue at the post office.
So we'd have to replace Second Avenue as well, so we'd be basically looking at, the only place without water line is between Second and War.
No, no. It just starts at War and goes all the way to smother. We're not replacing...
No, no, I'm asking, where, there's no water line between Second and War, correct?
Right.
Okay. But it don't make sense to pave between Second and the bridge and fight in college if we're gonna have to replace the water line?
No, it doesn't make sense to replace water lines and pave anything.
Yeah.
My opinion is that I don't think the Main Street is the worst pavement in this city, but y'all, y'all own it every day. If we don't already have a grant to do this, doesn't it make sense to get a grant to replace the water line before we get going on this?
Yes, that's...
That's what we're looking.
Okay.
Help us look, because we're hoping some of this, this American relief by coming down, which is for infrastructure, and believe me, we're gonna need several million if we're really looking at replacing the water answer this time, so...
We're gonna need to get that paved, but there ain't no point in paving if we're gonna tear it back up?
No.
But we keep, we've been kicking this in for how long?
I think we got, I think we got worse roads that need paving.
That was, that was the contractor, that was what we're saying. You know, if you want, they've got a price, I don't know if they'd be willing to change roads with this price. I'm gonna say they probably would entertain it, but basically they're saying, you know, don't waste this money if you're gonna dig it up. I agree with them, it's, we didn't find out, we didn't find out the water line being bad until after it was bid, and they're willing to hold it right now.
We kind of talked through it and say, if they can't do this till April, we might be able to get that water line fixed before then if we can find a funding for it.
I don't think you'll get it, I don't think you'll get the construction done by April. I think you might find out. You can get plans done and approved.
Let me ask this.
Mr. Jones felt a little differently.
You were saying something about get a plan and check on it two years later, something like that? What was that? Did I mishear that?
They said to pave it and tear it up two years. Yeah, okay. They're just saying, you know, because they're saying it ain't... Yeah, okay. They're just saying, you know, because they're saying it ain't been, one of them lives here, he's a resident.
Yeah.
That works for them, so he's got a, he's got a town interest in mine too, besides just their company looking. Because they're, I mean, it's going to look bad on everybody, so. Um, but his point was, um, if y'all are aware of a situation after they bid it, then address it, don't just go ahead and pave this and waste your.
Yeah, and my, my opinion on this is we can stop the project if we're going to dig it up. Uh, we voted on it, but the planning commission voted on it too, so.
It doesn't mean we don't have to do it, but we can delay it.
We can delay the project.
Yeah, they're willing to hold it right now.
Because I think we're just putting the cart to the horse on this totally. I mean, I, I, I want that street paved, but that don't make those, that's, that's putting the cart to the horse on it.
All right, we could, I'd like to make a motion that we delay the project till we get funding for the water line if we're at that point.
I'll second.
Motion second, any discussion on that?
Oh, yeah, and I'm, I'm all for it, but, um, after we're done with this, I think we need to go ahead and, well, I'll make a motion after this.
Right, we have a motion to delay the paving project till we can see if we can get a grant for the water line and get that going. Any further discussion? All in favor, opposed? Okay, so we, we, let's talk more about that, Evan, and I think Mr. Jones says my guess most to share.
I want to make a motion to mayor that you don't mind.
Sure.
I like the motion that we started looking at, um, getting bids, like, let me start off. I'll make a motion that we look at bids and grants on getting that water line done in that area, on those, on those two specific areas right there.
I'll second.
What specific areas, call them, sorry?
Main Street.
Uh, Main Street between, um.
Warden, Smothering, any?
Warden, Smothering.
Warden, yeah.
Now, the one going across Second Avenue, have you looked at that too?
I don't think it will.
Who's taking that?
Uh, any discussion on that? Y'all in favor? And just, just so you know, we are talking with T deck about some of those funds that could possibly do this, so. Have us on the radar, just so if we could get that funding. Mr. Jones thinks we might still be able to get it in before the paving, if we push the paving back, so let's see what we can come up with.
Um, can you bring the, can you?
What we've got more?
Yeah, can you update us on that at the next council?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And I think, um, city attorney, they might have all got kicked off, I don't know what happened.
Well, they can still be on, but I think they went back to their vacation.
I don't blame them.
I mean, Mr. Mullins, are you still on? No, he's still on. Yeah, Mr. Mullins, Attorney Mullins, he's still there. There you are. Can you get, can you go back to video, please?
They gifted, um.
No, no, he's invited and he's connected now.
Is that important that we do that?
Yes, your point.
I understand that, but I mean, he's, he's logged off, so and that's. We're not supposed to be using Zoom anyway, so.
Well, you can move, but not for y'all. He's, he's logging back in.
Anyway.
Let's go forward. Um, so the Third, Third Avenue pavement?
Yes, Third Avenue retaining wall, that's the last one I got, I started something else. Um, we took bids on this again, we remitted on September the twenty-first. Uh, the bids came in at this time at three hundred and twenty thousand for the original design. We also bid, um, alternate designs where we shortened the wall. We took the slope to the fence, um, all the way to the fence, which required a little bit more embankment. The price for that wound up coming in at three fifty, so it costs more to have a shorter wall because there's more regular. So you're, you're basically swapping, uh, excavation for the, the difference in your concrete and stuff for your wall. So three twenty is the, the low bid at this point. You have the option to award that, you have the option to reject it. It's the options on, uh, the Third Avenue retaining wall.
And just to remind you that we'd be coming out of a reserve, because we don't have any kind of grant.
We don't have three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to go on the wall.
We, we did talk to some other folks who were going to give us an estimate from a different angle, but I don't know that it'll be any less than that. It's not a good situation because that's money we could pay one of our streets with.
That's a lot of money. My motion, we build it up, bid again, just see if someone hits it.
Yeah, a motion, we have a second on that.
I do want to, I do want you to know it's three thirteen the first time. It's three twenty this time, so you have the option of it still going up. I just.
Eventually this bubble's going to pop and it's going to come back down.
I agree.
I was saying, I feel like we can hold out till the bubble pops. I mean, it needs to be done, but for that amount, I mean.
I find it amazing that we cannot find FEMA money for something like this, because that was clearly caused by the flooding.
Yep.
And why everybody else can get it and we can't?
Well.
Especially when you've got a cemetery involved.
We, we've tried. You can do it after the fact. In this particular instance, it wasn't caused, but you can do what they call preventative going forward. So I think Scott has applied to see if we can get.
They said, they're, what they ruled, because I sat in on the meeting, was that earth itself is not, uh, considered a disaster, so they don't cover.
Replacing dirt.
Replacing dirt. If you lost a building, if you lost some kind of structure, they pay for that, but they will not pay for.
Can, I mean, is there something we can do just temporarily, just to, like, so that nothing's done? But, I mean, maybe something a lot cheaper that we could do? I mean, it's just, I mean.
What about putting riff raft or something on it?
Well, the problem with that is you've got to get it to stay, and it's so steep right now, you've got to grade it. And the only way to grade it to where it'll even stay is to do this, a wall, so you can get a slope that'll maintain.
I mean, even if we put a, um, one of those, you know, T-wall, like, put T-walls behind it, just so you can get T-walls for, how much can, how much does a T-wall cost? Two thousand bucks? You could line T-walls up against it, and so if something happens, be good to go.
Why couldn't we do something like you did on the bluff? Put the rock and the netting on there and then have it anchored?
Okay.
I'm just asking.
I, I want to explain, because we've all went through the block. There's, there's ten ways to go about a retaining wall, and all involves a wall.
What you're running into down here is there's a cemetery. There's bodies in the cemetery that nobody knows where they're at. So all your contractors are very, um, hesitant to drill back. All those things have to be drilled at a, at an angle to hold back.
Okay.
So nobody wants to, they're going to, they're going to get it really high. And the reason your bid went up from three, uh, from three twenty to three fifty on the short wall, but more excavation is because we're getting closer. We're excavating closer to that fence, or there's bodies on the other side. So that contractor is, he's also more skittish of getting. And also you've got to think about when they're trying to build these walls during construction, they've got to move this dirt. So it's unstable, more unstable than it is now, and if it comes up, a hard rain, um, you know, you could have a, have a, a problem there. So they're having to temporarily hold this thing back while they're trying to put a permanent solution to, so that's some of your costs.
Um, about how long, if they were to start the project, how long, do we know about how long it would take to do the project?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me. I, I probably give them probably ninety days or something.
Okay, I'm just thinking, if we put this off and we get to spring rains again, are we going to be in more trouble? Because the spring's really bringing a lot of rain now.
So here's an idea, just an idea, I'm an engineer, you are. We used to have to haul in the big old T-walls in our rack, they're like eight hundred bucks a box. And probably about three thousand dollars to install them back. But they're like fourteen feet tall, T-walls, cover that. And just temporarily, so that nothing happened until we see this cost go down, we could put five or six T-walls alongside there, and that's going to hold it back. I mean, can we do T-walls?
Would you play one of the T-walls?
A T-wall's like a big, you know, the, the barriers you have on the interstate when they're doing construction? Those are like little small T-walls. T, big T-walls are like really tall. It's the same, it's their concrete. They just haul them in, pick them off the truck, put them in there.
You're basically just going to hold back whatever slows off and falls down there and keeps it out of the road. Uh, you're still not going to stop the erosion, the erosion and the possibility of a, of a failure, a major failure that are on that unstable thing, so.
Could we temporarily go outside of the fence and ditch it to try to run the water off? Would that help any?
I, I, the burning the water would help a lot.
Could, do we have to go through engineering to do that, or can the city do it? What, what y'all think about it? Y'all the experts. I'm not putting you down, I didn't mean that, but. You can ditch it if you want, ditch it. Run it down.
Yeah, that's the trouble, they got six foot.
I'm not putting a bike over there.
No.
What I'm saying is, I don't think we need to do the three hundred and twenty friggin' thousand dollars on it, but also I don't think we need to not do anything either. So, I mean, let's attempt to do something, but.
We've got to do something.
I mean.
Evan, I have a question. We have applied for one of these so-called preventative things, we're being like, it could be sometime down the line, even if we got it. If we waited to see if we got that, would we still be in a pretty bad situation or?
It's all a race against the clock. Nobody knows if it's going, going to fail again or not. There's a possibility, because, I mean, it's exposed and it's, and it's, you've had a failure there before, so. It's just a chance. I mean, I, I can't, I can't guarantee it's going to fail, I can't guarantee it's going to stay there either, so.
And you can't guarantee that any costs will come down if we delay?
No, or go up. I mean, right now inflation, I mean, everything's going up.
And it sounds like the liability that goes along with it and making sure that it's going to be right is part of the cost. It's not just materials.
Correct.
They're going to have to stand behind that and it's in a, and it's in a kind of strange.
Yeah, that's why we can't just put anything up there. I mean, this is, I mean, we designed this to be armed and it's going, it's going to withstand anything that comes at it.
It's a huge percentage chunk of our operating budget. We can't afford three hundred thousand dollars.
Steve, did you?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we move on from this and we table it till we can get some more information on what we can do to save money for the city in order to get this accomplished, but we need to act on it somehow, so let's move on to November for, for the discussion. And maybe give it to Evan to see if he can vote some other kind of plan that would work.
Steve, I'll second your motion.
We have a motion second to table this to November. Any discussion?
Can I make amendments to motion? Um, can the city bring us temporary plans on, on this, on some ideas that'll be just?
Okay, we have a motion to move this to November, to table it to November, would that bring some additional ideas and plans? Any further discussion?
Yeah, Evan, Evan, uh, will there be additional ideas or are we going to be back to where we're at right now?
I mean, we'd give you the best design for the situation. This type of wall doesn't require any, um, anything having to be drilled back to hold, um, into the area of the cemetery. It's a, it's a vertical wall. It requires the least amount of excavation during construction because the, the whole idea is if you disturb that during construction, a lot of it, and it comes a heavy rain during that process, there's a high possibility you're going to fail there. There's, there's lots of different methods of retaining walls, but in the end, it's all, it's going to have to be a retaining wall, and you're just changing one type of retaining wall for another one, and the price is probably going to stay.
Yeah, I'm, I, I agree, something needs to be done. I don't know that it's putting off a month, um, because I think we're going to be right back here where we're at right now, discussing the same things, and we've lost a month and possibly went up in price. I don't want to spend three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I don't think we financially even can. Uh, but we need to do something, we need to do tonight, in my opinion.
Evan, one more question, because you did this, some of the things that we sent to FEMA, FEMA, wherever. Well, is your experience of this kind of thing qualify for preventative?
I don't think so, because they're not looking at this situation as being, um, they don't look at it being the cemetery. If that means they could care less what was stood there. They, they look more at structures being.
Safe.
Yeah, safe or a loss of them.
Well, no, I'm not talking about the replacement, that other pocket of money they had that said that we could then apply for preventative so it would prevent anything like that from happening in the future.
Right, he was saying there's no structure up there for what to do.
Yeah, they're not looking to give you money. They're saying your soul is not, um, it doesn't qualify for being a replacement of any kind of.
You love the church up there, prevent it. Um, the church don't charge property.
Still FEMA.
Yeah. We still owe it to the citizens of this town.
FEMA's going to try to skirt out of it, they always.
Oh, yeah.
But that's.
That's, I mean, that's one thing, it's, it's not all about y'all, so.
Question for Evan or Derek or Les, uh, is it feasible to get a trencher? A small trencher up there to, how do you feel about that? It's going to be kind of iffy.
Yeah. Their bike is soft up there.
Uh-huh. I was afraid of that, but I just wanted to hear.
The guys mowing the yard almost had a.
I had to tell them not to mow anymore. It slid down.
I was thinking, we can put it off.
Yeah, that sounds.
It was liabilities.
What we said with the motion to put it off for a month.
We're still in discussion on it, so.
One more question, Evan. Do you know many grants or something like that?
I don't. I don't for a retaining wall.
And Jesse, I agree, we got to do something, but I don't, I don't have any information to do anything tonight. And I think we just got to see what they can do and then vote on it. I like either, we should do something tonight, but we don't have any information to do anything tonight, unless we want to spend three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Basically the only option as of right now.
As of right now.
I don't know that they're going to come this month.
That's my problem. I don't know that we're going to come up with new solutions, and the price of what we're talking about right now may go up even in a month.
I'm not, I mean, anything remotely close to that, I, I, I'm not going to vote for that. That's, that's not, we are, we cannot afford that at all. For, especially for just that little bit of a project, you know, it's.
It's a major issue.
It's a major issue, though.
It is a major.
It is.
It is a little project as far as the space, but it's a, it'll be terrible if that thing falls down and bails on somebody.
No, I mean, we'll have another one next, you know.
Walking from that church up there, the ground is getting soft in front of it. When the church goes.
That's going to be something.
In FEMA maybe, probably not.
Well, have you, have y'all walked up there?
Yeah.
It's soft up there.
We, we know that it needs to be fixed.
We know it needs to, we know it needs to be fixed, but, I mean, we don't.
We don't know how.
Into. The, the, they're, they're.
It's crazy.
There's got to be some other way to do it.
Can't do it.
There's got to be some other way to do it.
I like the idea of at least waiting one more month and thinking about it, but I don't want to put it off any longer than one more month.
I have a suggestion. At that time, me and Scott both can see where the status may be of that FEMA preventative. I'm with Evan, I don't know that it'll do any good. We've submitted and we've tried different things, but they do have different areas to apply for, so. Just two different plots of land.
I like the idea of what Cole said about the temporary barriers, the T-things that you're talking about, just to hold it for a while.
It's something, it ain't going to fix it. I'm not saying that'll fix that at all.
It was just something temporary.
It's something that's a possibility. I mean, if we're worried about someone getting hurt, well, that'll keep people from getting hurt. But, I mean, it's, it's still going to keep a problem there, but takes that off. I feel like we're going to spend ten thousand dollars or whatever it is to do the temporary and then turn around and spend three hundred, and who knows if it's.
That's three percent of the price.
Three hundred, three percent of the price?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it.
No, I know, but I'm saying, and still spend what we're going to, going to spend anyway, and it may be more. We could spend four hundred plus the ten.
There's a lot of uncertainty out there now.
No.
Well, we're asking our, our, our city workers to do that, something that they don't know if it's going to hold or not either. That's liability to them.
We're not asking them for a guarantee, we're asking them just to alleviate some.
Bill, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, what I was going to say, it didn't have to be the fourteen foot. It could be the other, the smaller ones.
It'd be something.
Be expensive, just to kind of keep the people away from that, right?
Just something.
Evan, what's your experience?
Uh, they're talking about the traffic barriers, is what I'm, and it's TKN, I was about to only, I mean, there's, um, more, but there's a few companies that just come and set up one of them. I don't know what the cost is to do it, but.
So it doesn't go back, right?
Well, I mean, if it's slow, so it's going to hold, it's going to catch it and keep it out of the road.
Les, how do you feel about that?
Well, they work. You know, keep it out of the road.
It ain't going to be pretty looking either. It'll be safe until we can figure out something better. But, I mean, something's got to, something's got to given this.
We have to have done really what the solution he's given us. It's just a matter of finding the funding to do it. Is that what we're talking about?
It's the funding or waiting for prices or bids or something to happen because three years ago we did this project. It would've been a way, a whole different price and a whole different story. It could be another three years before we get back to the price. It could be another three years, it could be a year, it could be ten, we don't know.
Bodies start calling out, then they're gonna call you more than that.
Exactly.
You're right.
Yeah, I think the cost is gonna go up if we wait.
Evan, we've talked about one other possibility, the netting, the netting with, with the vegetation. Is that any temporary fix for that, do you think?
They can still just.
Well, it's, it's the whole, that's, that option, you still have to drill back to hold, to be able to hold the, the nice.
You're drilling in dirt. It's just a bunch of dirt in there.
But there's bodies.
Bodies and dirt.
Yeah.
They, they ain't no rock to drill into.
Correct, but you gotta go way back with us. It's a heathlet's head.
Yeah, yeah, very, yeah. I don't agree that that, that would work at all.
But the netting's not gonna stop them. If it's mud, it's gonna slide through it anyway, isn't it?
Correct. Well, you got some rocks on it.
You can put rocks under it and put them.
Well, the railroad ties, you know, like when they, you tear us railroad ties, I mean.
There's gate, there's gate ends, you know, which is riprap inside baskets, which y'all have seen. That's, but it's gonna be, I've done talk, it's gonna be about the same price.
We can put some ESCOs up there, they rock, they rock out of ESCOs.
But you just, that's what I'm saying, you're gonna change one type of retaining wall for another, but in the end, it's still gonna, but you're still gonna be involved.
Okay, we have a motion. I know there's a lot of discussion to table this. And we discussed it. Do you, can I, do you wanna go ahead and vote to table this or not?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so we have four to two. So, we'll table this to November and if we discover something before then, we will get an email out to everybody. Thank you very much. Um, and we go into engine of business? Yes, sir.
Motion to limit discussion to two minutes per item per councillor. Second.
We have a motion second to limit to two items per item. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Our CFP isn't here, but it's the second reading of the ordinance that we passed, the first reading last time.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second and any discussion on that? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
Who's second in that? I'm sorry.
Everybody.
Everybody's second.
Thank you.
Everybody. It was a second, third, fourth, fifth.
Okay, second item is the purchase of a truck for the sewer plant. Uh, we, we've already sent out that information, right?
Yes, and it's in their buckets.
And that's in your budget, is that correct?
Yeah, we improved in the budget this year, I think about a hundred thousand dollars to get a new sewer. Uh, when we got to ninety-one, we better get through this year really, but we waited for the twenty twenty-two prices coming out, so this is for twenty twenty-two Chevrolet sixty-five hundred four-wheel drive, which was one of the main things we wanted was four before. The one biggest problem we had was getting stuck in the field and we had to call it back over, come pull aside. Uh, it's got a V eight diesel engine, Allison transmission with a metal bed and fifteen hundred gallon tank put on the back. Total price was, uh, sixty-six thousand, four eight nine, sixty-four.
Okay, so you came in.
So, we came in way under the hundred, which.
We're gonna guess.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any discussion?
Explain that truck, like, what's, what's it gonna use a truck for, this one specifically?
For hauling sludge to the bay.
That's just, that's your sludge truck, okay.
Yes, or used sludge.
I was like, I was thinking a regular work truck, oh, good God, okay.
That's all the same thing.
So, sixty-six is.
That's when, yeah, the, uh, the bed and the tank is the sixteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-three, to get the fifteen hundred gallon tank put on the back and metal bed. And actually Chevrolet's the only one that has a four-wheel drive at the factory. We priced, tried to price through Ford and out at San, out at San Fernando, Murfreesboro, we contacted them three times. They never gave us a bid on it. Plus, their four-wheel drive would've been an aftermarket from another company. So, with this being local, Wilson County, if we had a problem, we can get it back for, we figured this was the best route for us to go there.
In the budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, three in the budget.
Have a motion second. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the grass in city streets, council, council lady, Ellen?
Um, I'd just like to know where we stand on that. Have we seen any improvement with the grass on the streets? You're still calling a problem?
Yes.
It's approved?
Yes, it is.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep.
If we needed to take action, I wanted us to do that, but.
I like that.
It helped, okay.
Nice ask.
Okay, then we have item number four, first reading of a health mandate resolution, councilman E.
So, this is not a, uh, I gave this to y'all last month just to be able to read it over, um, whether you are pro, um, having a vaccination or not, that's not the point of this. Um, I, I support the right for everyone to do, uh, do what they want and it's none of my business. Who's vaccinated, who's not. Where we are in this country, and this happened since then, is we've got mandates coming down from federal levels, possibly state levels, and, um, it's not the government's job to mandate anyone to do anything with their health. That's your choice. Um, we're not here to debate whether your choice is the right choice or not. That's not the, the point is, is what goes in your body is you cannot have someone forcing, forcing you to put things in. So, basically, this is the same thing as the Second Amendment resolution we passed, just with medical mandates. So, I just wanted to ask everyone if they would, um, you know, please, please vote for this. Um, you all have time to look it over, so if you all have any questions for me, have an answer.
Second for discussion.
I have any questions to approve yet? Motion to adopt a resolution CR dash two zero two one one zero zero seven dash one, Bravo. Second for discussion.
We have a motion second. Any discussion on that?
I do feel like, um, Cole, with respect, that it's, um, kind of a paper law. I feel like, um, that the piece of paper is, is not going to. Basically, if you've got, uh, what we've seen a lot in the country is the, the medical field getting hit with this or, uh, losing their jobs. And I don't know that this, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this, this piece of paper would stop, uh, say, uh, it's not gonna count as a memorial anymore, but whatever it is up there, the hospital for Carthage, uh, would stop them from being able to do that. Is that the case? Is that what you're saying?
No, this is a, this is just basically saying, um, it's, 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 it's where we are in government. I'm constantly told, the government's there to protect our constitutional rights. And that's what I'm constantly told and constantly I'm watching the government, us, we're the government, um, not doing that. And this is just us at our local level saying, we're not gonna stand for that. Um, we, it's none of our business. Where your stance, stance, stance is on this. There's no federal mandate that can do this. They're mandating right now that businesses with over a hundred people have to do this, okay? Now, I don't think we have any businesses in the town of Carthage with that, so that really doesn't affect us. But what happens when they start doing it to fifty people?
Sure.
To twenty people, to ten people. Um, when, when we wrote this, it wasn't even a hundred people. There was no mandates, but now there is. And a year ago, it was a conspiracy theory that anyone would ever do that. And now we're here. And so, this is to get ahead and, and, and let's say it's a paper, a paper law, okay? It's just a paper law. But what is law?
Well, I'm asking.
We're in discussion, it's okay. Civilized discussion.
Then we'll come back on you if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Steve.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, I'm gonna act with what Jesse said. This, this is a piece of paper. We're taking your time voting on some of this. My recommendation is the county's gonna break, take this up also. If they adopt the resolution, I'd say we adopt the same resolution the county has, that we have the same wording, same verbiage in both resolutions. That way we're not wasting our time and double doing what we need to do. So, I make a motion to table this until.
Well, we're still.
So, this is just discussion for the motion on the floor. Any further discussion, please?
Going back to what we talked about with the Second Amendment, again, if we go against state or federal law, we do risk, um, just like some people risk losing their jobs. We risk losing state or federal funding.
Absolutely.
And also, I'm not sure that, that this is such a controversial issue that I'm not sure the town of Carthage, uh, citizens would want us to be deciding this.
So, what we're saying is our liberties are forsaken. Because we will lose federal funding from our taxpayers, so we're, we're gonna squabble over funding from Washington on our liberties.
I'll answer that. I, I'm not, I'm not concerned, um, nearly as much about, uh, that, that's just a point. That's just one more point of why, why not to adopt this. Um, but I, I'm not nearly as, uh, worried about federal funding as I am putting more paper laws onto our city books. We've got several on there anyway that would, we benefit from getting rid of. I don't think we need to add any more. And I'm all for people doing what, um, what they feel is right. I'm, I don't wanna get involved in that either, anybody's decision. But I just, I don't think this is, respectfully, again, I don't think it's worth our time to.
Well, this is, in fact, Zach, this would be, to your point exactly, this would be getting rid of a lot of laws that would be coming down. This would be.
Potentially.
Potentially, yes, exactly. So, I agree with you, which is the point of this. So, we shouldn't have paper laws, so we're gonna create paper laws. Well, paper law, to the paper law, paper law, paper law, paper law, paper law, paper law, that just says, you know, any paper laws, the dozens and hundreds of paper laws are gonna come down. This is gonna stop. This, this, this is your cover. This stops.
We're not getting anywhere, y'all going back and forth.
I think we've gone over the two minutes.
We understand.
Is there any further discussion? Anyone wanna call a question?
Call a question.
Okay, call a question. Second to that?
Second.
Okay.
We gotta vote on the call question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we'll go back and now vote on the main motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
This is Carrie, thank you. Are we going to number five, previous tax accessory invoice?
Yes, um, we were gonna get an update from the city, um, where we are on that tax accessory invoice. It's okay.
Sorry? All right. That's the timer.
You put a bit less of water in the water.
Okay, sorry about that. That was the timer. It's been a while. Go right ahead.
Oh, we were supposed to get a report from the city on where we are as far as legalities between the tax accessory invoice, so it's not really my thing.
We have not heard back unless Attorney Mullins, have you heard anything back? Attorney Mullins?
I'm sorry, I.
Have you heard anything back about the, the, the proposition that we, the proposal to the tax assessor from the three counties cities?
Mr. Winkler was supposed to be writing that letter. Um, I, I'm, 'cause I sit here right now, I don't wanna tell you. I can't say one hundred percent that the letters actually been wrote at this moment in time. For some reason, I think it maybe has.
It did go out. It did go out. We got a copy, I believe, of that.
Okay, okay, well, uh, and as far as to my knowledge, I don't think we've received a response from the county that I have saw. That's not to say Mr. Winkler hasn't received one, but I haven't saw any type of response.
Why was I gonna say, you've got, you're talking about this year's tax.
No, I'm talking about this situation. We're talking about like.
Not the one we've already paid, because you got the, you got the.
No, not the one we've already paid. So, this is the one where, the one where we're disputing. So, I'd like to just motion that we table this to, to hear the response next month.
Second.
Okay, we table this. Uh, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then we go to the next item, six, walking trail, ask me.
Yes, okay, um, anybody gone after the walking trail in the past month?
Absolutely.
Okay. We're ready to check for that?
Well, it goes in, you, it's three payments that we, yes, we got.
How many payments have we made? One payment, okay. I like the motion that, um, we withhold payment on the, the second two until we get a situation on what's going on. Apparently, they're not answering.
I'll second.
Well, I think we have sent them a letter, Mr. Attorney Mullins, that they are over.
We can have discussion now.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yes.
Well, what I'd like to know, I'd see what the actual contract says, if we're struggling with the payments. Because they say they complete this much and give them this percentage, they complete this much and give them this.
My letter has, it's, it's, it would not, there would not be any further money issued, that, uh, they need to contact the city immediately um, about, you know, completing the project or just discussion on how to move forward. If, if they're not willing to complete the project, to let us know so we can get another contractor and then we'll, we'll, you know, figure out exactly how much work they have done and what exactly they're owed minus whatever liquidated damages, uh, the city would have.
May I, this is the second, because we do have a, um, in, in the contract, there was a sixty-five, a sixty day per initial finish and then a seventy-five to complete it. And as you're saying, we have gone over that. It started, uh, June twenty-fourth, and so we're counting seventy-five days from there, so they have gone over. And that's why we sent them the letter that they are now into liquidated funds. And we're giving them the leadway to get this finished or take action. Is that correct, attorney?
Well, I, well, and I guess, I guess I need to ask the majority that question. It'll be something you guys can vote on. Since it is outside of the contract time for completion, do you, as a council, wanna move forward? And I, I get their name wrong every time I say it. Is it ISCO?
Isengard.
Isengard, no. Do you, as a council, wanna move forward with Isengard completing the project? Or do you wanna move forward and try and find another contractor to complete it and let's work on what type of damage you might have with Isengard?
Well, I think we need to find out how far we are. How, how close are we?
He speaks to everything he's in the warranty period. Also, with the liquidated damages, he has rain days, which was not addressed in the ninety days. So, there are so many days he gets for.
Seventy-five.
And, well, any bad weather.
So.
That was the coolest thing I was gonna ask.
That's part of the contract itself.
It didn't affect that date.
And then y'all got, he did write him, so y'all got thirty days. I think it's thirty days for the contract, um, typically for them to respond and get fixed. Or y'all can take action at that point.
But we're very close to.
Well, y'all sent him a letter, so I'm in the.
No, no, but how close are we to actually finishing?
He has finished. He's just working on what he's already, he's technically greatest apart, he's holding water in spots. So, now he's going back and fixing those areas at this corner.
Is he fixing the pavement, the holes in the pavement?
He will, that's what I'm saying. He gets, he gets a punch list.
Right.
So, he's substantially complete. Then you give him a punch list, then that becomes warranty, worth of warranty period. Um, legally, you can't hold pavement, um, by the contract.
Oh, they, the another thing would be nice is they pick up their trash. That's a very small thing, but if they can pick up all their trash, that's kinda puff pop, popping out everywhere. Uh, also, I don't know much about, um, engineering, but we've got this nice paved, um, handicap spot. And it ends, it's like a, it's like a island there. They gotta get to the walking track there, so I'm not really sure what the point of that is. And maybe that, is that not part of the scope of the project? Are we gonna pave the rest of the parking lot?
That was part of the original, um, submittal that, uh, Warren did to the grant for y'all to get. Y'all had to put that in. Um, and that was the ADA portion of the trail.
But it does go to the small.
Oh, it does. It gets you to the trail.
Yeah, it's, it's paved over too, I believe.
Yes, but we could not add anything, we could not add anything to the scope and we could not take anything away once we get in the middle of it. What was originally submitted to be done had to be done.
What it looks like, I know, it's, it's.
Making a motion that we move this past the thirty day notice that the attorney's given to the company to make sure the works have been done and completed. If they do not fulfill the contract by then, we take further action.
Second.
Did you repeat that?
I'm making a motion that we move this past the thirty day notice that the attorney has.
He's gotta write.
I know, I keep forgetting that. Past the thirty day notice the attorney has given this company, if they do not complete the contract as agreed upon, then we take further action at that time.
So, you want to extend thirty days, is what you're asking?
No, no, we get the contract, just like with the contract.
Listen up.
I wanna go, the, the attorney wrote them a letter for thirty days. That should take us to our next meeting. So, we'll discuss this at our next meeting with the attorney to follow up and then with Evan's follow up, who'll know what actually was done per the contract. If they have not fulfilled their contractual obligations by next meeting, we take further action. How about that?
Second.
All right, so you've given them the thirty days to fulfill the contract. Any discussion on that?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not giving them.
We're not giving them.
I'm not giving them an additional thirty days.
We're giving us thirty days to evaluate.
To find out if they've come up with, we're not taking any action tonight. We're gonna wait and see if they fulfill their contract obligations by the next meeting, or not, then we take further action.
Okay, well, so we're tabled the next time, okay?
And we want, and because we're in discussion, there's places where there should be drains going through underneath and they're not. It's just gonna puddle water up against concrete. I mean, it's like.
Yep.
There, the, i- i- it's like they went in and, I mean, it, look, it's terrible. It's so.
That, that part went in there. What we had to design is what was originally submitted. Um, they're trying their best to work with what's down there. It's, uh. It's, uh, I'm not taking their side by no means, I'm, I'm on y'all's, but it's so flat down there, you're doing the best you can do to get that place to drain, um, without bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of dirt to.
You're talking about the trash.
And that's a flood plain, and you ain't broken, you can feel, so I mean, it's, it's just a bad area to try to grade, uh, and maintain FEMA.
Yeah, you're right, because at once was a trade park, and it was.
It still feels like a trailer park.
And if I'm hearing correctly, Evan, you have to stick with the original engineering plan.
Oh, yes, yeah, that was.
We're too young to do that.
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, we can all make clear. Yeah, we know where that problem's at.
Point of order.
Yep.
Okay, yes, you wanna take a vote?
Yes.
Alright, let's have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to real quick make a motion, and, um, because it should be an unfinished business, as I discussed last month, so to add an update for, uh, what's going on with the lights at the park, 'cause that's supposed to be under unfinished business.
You talking about on the law field?
Yeah.
Very, very, okay.
She put, she put a, we're all done and all.
It's a hundred percent, we got the brand new lights up, everything like that?
Well, that's taped until January.
That's the tape of January, yes.
They've got light, very bright lights.
Timber.
I'll, I'll represent my motion.
Okay.
I apologize.
No.
I just wanna make a word.
Yeah, we're tired.
The kids are very thankful to all of you, as are the parents and coaches, and they know that. Alrighty, uh, in due business, first reading, oh, our building, our building codes. We right now are 2012, we have to update to 2018, 'cause 2012 will be up next year. Uh, everybody around is updating to 2018, did we send?
Yes, I sent out.
You have the.
Motion to approve it.
Second.
A motion to approve the, it's an ordinance, and when they take two readings.
Motion to approve on the first reading, then.
Okay.
The, what kind of, um, just, I doubles advocate on this one, what kind of implications we got with these 2018 bill code versus 2012? Is it, are there any major changes? Can we get advice on the major changes at my?
Um, no, not, not any major, major updates on that, no. I don't have to talk about it, but anyway.
Can I, um?
But, but we do have to, because by law, we can't, is it every seven years?
Every seven years.
Seven years, we have to update.
Oh, can I ask the attorney a question?
Sure, Mr. Mullins?
He went to sleep.
Attorney Mullins?
There he is.
We have a question, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, Attorney Mullins, have you looked at this or, have you looked at this ordinance yet, as far as the international building codes?
No, I haven't.
Okay, I was wondering, I think we're gonna vote on this tonight, but we gotta read this twice. Um, can you look through this and see if there's any major changes on what we're voting on? That can possibly affect us?
Well, our planning person has looked through it, and our Lynn, they both said.
Our building inspector, city.
So that'd be, that'd be, okay, Lynn, Lynn.
Yeah, I have to, or otherwise we don't have building codes.
Can we, then let me ask this, I apologize, City Attorney Mullins, can we have, can we have Lynn come in, uh, the next council meeting? You know, explain any differences to us, 'cause there might be some stuff in there, just knowing the way the building codes are, that sneaks in and makes things a lot more difficult for different businesses, and different homes, and makes it a lot harder to get things done and approved. I mean, I just, I, none of us here are doing that, so.
Would you be okay with making, doing the first vote tonight, 'cause it takes two votes, and then let him come in next time?
We already made a motion.
We've already made a motion.
Second to vote on tonight, so.
We have to vote either way, if this is.
Alright, any further discussion on that?
Well, you didn't answer my question.
They can come next time.
Yeah, can you, okay, you'll have some, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Both.
Motion to approve special permit.
Second.
Okay, uh, special permit to personnel at church, all, uh, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see what else we have here.
Any of them, any opposed, okay? Any opposed, no.
Uh, lights on flagpole, firehouse, Simmons.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, just get estimates on what it would cost to get, uh, proper lighting on our flagpoles at the fire department, at the city, and at the city park, those are our three flag spray.
Got one sewer plant and a water plant, well, what's one water plant and?
City plant, water plant, okay, so all five of those, second.
Okay, we have a motion to get estimates on, uh, for the four flags. Second, any discussion?
Estimates on the lighting.
Estimates, cost of lighting the flagpoles at those locations.
Any discussion?
Are we being specific about which ones, just so, 'cause right here it just says, city park, okay, I just, you know.
Specifications, just any, any flags that we're responsible for as a city. You just need to be displaying them correctly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, prevailing at city pool, and lighting in city park, councilman?
Uh, I would like to see us address the issue and investigate the issue, see if FEMA would allow us to extend the building that is used for storage now, that used to be the concession stand at the city pool, is bring that roof out to the existing concrete area, the same width of that building, so that we would allow or provide some, uh, shade for particularly the parents that are down there with their kids. Less, and I talked about it, we may not give cause of FEMA, but it would be an open shed, it would be open, just probably what? Six, six posts, or something like that? It would be, should be fairly inexpensive to build.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, second, to check in if there's any regulations with FEMA that would prevent that. Any discussion?
Are you talking about the, uh, the concession stand?
The old one, yeah, where we used to go get candy bars, back in there, that.
And that's just to find out if we can, okay. Yeah, and I'm, I have notions of that, can we, before we do the project though, we get bids on, what do we look like and everything like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So right now, we're just checking with FEMA, see if we.
See if we can.
See what we can do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And as far as the lighting at the city park, and less than I talked about it before the meeting, uh, my thoughts on it, uh, are apparently not doable at this time, but somehow, on the streets through there, we need more lighting, because there's kids walking in the dark. You'll see people with a flashlight, trying to get your kids back to their car. And I would like to see us try to figure out a solution to that, or something to help anyone.
Is that the same as in the parking lot you were talking about, that's the same one?
The parking lot in the street in front of the city park.
We have checked with, uh, upper common, we put a pole with that light in the parking lot, you're talking about, so we can't.
Yeah, and they did get the, one of the existing lights going, which helped a little bit.
Well, you know about like on the, from the swing move entrance there, like on that wall, like what's.
I talked primarily on industrial drive from the area, probably a hundred feet south of Jefferson, to really close to where you turn to, um, not more lane than the other one. Anyway, there's so many cars down there, there's so many kids down there, it's so dangerous, that we need to see if we can find.
You're talking about out front, though.
Yeah, right, on the city, on the city, in the parking lot, and on the C Street.
So at the end of Jefferson, we got the switcher.
Right.
We can check in through the.
Okay. Oh, I got.
Do we need to vote on that motion, or would this check, this check?
I think this check only right now.
Okay, we'll do that.
That's alright, everybody.
That's fine, that's fine.
You know, y'all don't, take that.
We will, we will, we will, we've already checked, we're, we're about one of them, switching. Uh, now, we will come back and, we'll try something, there will be a price for putting you post, we will come back to that.
Right, okay.
Okay, our last item is peddler's permit, councilman?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, motion to suspend the rules for five minutes. So that we can have some, have, um, Mr. Wooders to be able to speak to this, who's not.
That would have to suspend the two minute that you, we voted on.
No, that's, this is a suspended rule, there's no rules.
There's a motion to suspend the rules for five minutes, Mr. Wooders. Second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and, Mr. Wooders?
Well, uh, I have a prepared statement, and it takes me ten minutes to read it, so I'll read what I can. I'd first off start off by apologizing to Mayor Smith. Uh, I, uh, submitted a permit and thought I had, asked to exempt all the vendors in the, uh, in the event, and I did not. I did not realize that until after I had, uh, she, she called me a couple of days before the event, and, uh, I looked at it, and she was in fact right, so Mayor, my apologies to you. I, I never intended to. I'll read through what I can, uh, you guys stop me, okay? Uh, Mayor Smith, ladies and gentlemen of the Carthage City Council, I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm speaking on my capacity as the executive director, and on behalf of the executive board of the Smith County Chamber of Commerce. A nonprofit organization which the town of Carthage is a founding member, and you're presiding members by virtue of election or members of our board of directors. I come to you tonight to ask for your help and relief in, with the events performed by the chamber for the benefit of the city of Carthage. The Smith County Chamber of Commerce is a tax exempt 501(c)(6) economic development corporation, which has a joint mission with county and municipal governments to foster economic growth and development. We're charged to do this while promoting business growth and acquisition of new commercial and industrial businesses locally. The Smith County Booster Club, which was a consortium of local merchants from Carthage and Gordonsville, was the first organized effort to bring customers into the towns. After several successful years, the Booster Club businesses formed an organization to represent the interest of Smith County into cities. The Smith County Chamber of Commerce was formed in 1974 by the will of the incorporated towns, the county government, and the local business leaders to promote industrial, commercial, and tourist growth locally. Due to the forward thinking of those community-minded individuals, the industrial park in Gordonsville was started and flourishes to this day decades later. Cooperation was the key to the success of these efforts, and remains so for the chamber. The chamber's mission, I will not read for, uh, sake of time, uh, you can find it on the website, uh, but it's basically to promote growth. On behalf of the executive board, we formally pledge to you, the Smith County Chamber of Commerce is here to support the businesses and organizations of the Smith County, the town of Carthage, the town of Gordonsville, the town of South Carthage, and the Smith County government in any reasonable way as directed by our charter and our board of directors. It's my hope that this cooperation will extend back to the Smith County Chamber of Commerce from each of our partners and members. Prior to my current tenure of eight years, and in time passed, a privilege of the Smith County Chamber of Commerce was to host events in the various towns in the county. The purpose was to promote each town and the local businesses in an effort to bring business from out of the county into each town. One of the first of these events was the Bluegrass Festival, which became so successful due to the large crowd, the local merchants opted to move it to the Defeated Creek Marina. Subsequently, operation of the event was given to the Defeated Creek Volunteer Fire Department, and it has been successful since that time, bringing people into the area each year. Another was the Iris Festival in Gordonsville, which isn't currently being held. Then, of course, the event in Carthage that has become the William Walton Harvest Festival. It started out as Pioneer Days many years back, then became Rendezvous on the Square, back to Pioneer's Days, and subsequently wasn't helped for a couple of years. Mayor Sabra Hodge asked us to take the material and fixtures that were left from these prior iterations to jumpstart a new event called William Walton Harvest Festival. Since starting under Mayor Hodge's tenure, and continuing through Mayor Donnie Dennis's tenure to arrive to the current administration, it has grown each year. At the startup and afterwards, the street closure and anything to do with the public safety side of the event was handled by Mayor Hodge and Police Chief John Hogan, which is now Chief Britt Davis, and Rescue Squad Director Jackie Carver through Sonny Carver, the current EMA director. The Smith County Chamber of Commerce supplied the dates and times to them, coordinated the event, obtained the vendors and demonstrators as we currently do. We perform these functions for the town of Carthage as we would do for any of the towns. The proper place for a festival celebrating Smith County's heritage should take place at our county's center on the main street, in front of our historic icon, the Smith County Courthouse, which was constructed in 1879. On the subject of licensure, the state of Tennessee is very clear. The state of Tennessee requires business license, uh, businesses with taxable sales of $10,000 or more to have a statewide business license issued by the Tennessee Department of Revenue. Businesses with taxable sales of more than 3,000 but less than 10,000 require a minimal activity license. This was the only licensing requirement for any business in the state required by the state of Tennessee, to my knowledge. Also, the businesses still apply for the license in their resident county. Mayor Smith graciously sent me a copy of the Town of Carthage Title IX Business Peddlers, Solicitors, et cetera ordinance. The part of the ordinance which would be applicable to William Walton Harvest Festival and all other festivals inside the center limits is Section 9101 (6), and it states, "Six, street barker." Means any peddler who does business during recognized festivals or parade days in the town, and who limits his business to selling or offering, to sell novelty items and similar goods in the area of the festival or parade. This would, it appears, to require a peddler's license for anyone participating in a festival. Okay, if you ask, what is the precedence? One would be obliged to point out that at no time up to the current year, no city in Smith County nor the county government has charged any fee or license fee to any visitor, vendor, participating in a festival or fair operating within their authoritative territory. If you ask, what is the position of other municipal authorities within Smith County? Currently, Gordonsville, South Carthage have, nor currently do they plan to charge community festivals a fee of any kind, even though they have an ordinance in place. The Smith County government have not, and currently do not levy fees on festivals on county property. As an aside, our local economy is integrated. The Gordonsville Industrial Park was developed through joint effort of the chamber, county, and cities. When the industrial park workforce expendable payroll increases, it boosts the sales tax in our retail center, which is basically the town of Carthage. Yet only the town of Gordonsville, with some built from county and state, has the responsibility for upkeep of the infrastructure. We all benefit from the success of each other, and we're in this together. If you ask, what is the position of surrounding counties and cities? Here is an email result of a poll from the Upper Common Tourism Association membership. I'll, uh, present this to you in a moment. Uh, the question was, do cities or counties charge a peddler's fee, a transient vendor fee, or solicitor fee to vendors or exhibitors that come to their events held on the city streets or in the county road? Granville, we don't have that type of chart. Livingston, depends on the event and the purpose, but most of our booths spend a lot of money, so we don't ask for fees. Salina, Clay County, these events are managed by certain charitable organizations, to my recollection, uh, there's no vendor fee. Uh, Macon County, not to our knowledge, typically any fees are charged by whoever's hosting the event. Jamestown, Pinterest County, we do not currently charge anything. Uh, Lady Patty Purdy, who's the executive director of the Upper Common Tourism Association, said, "I helped with an event in Putnam County, the vendors paid the event coordinator, it was up to the company hoping the event to pull in permits or higher security, but she was not aware of any fee the city or the county, Putnam County charged." Smith, DeKalb County, does not charge any fee for the Peddlers Jambari or other events on C Square. I verified that with the coordinator, Miss Suzanne Weeden. Jackson County does not charge any fees for any vendors or events in Grandville, Tennessee. I verified this with, uh, Mr. Randall Clemmons. If you ask, what benefits the town of Carthage? Positive exposure to outside vendors and visitors, increased revenue on the daily event, uh, an event that teaches and remembers our heritage and roots, and it's just plain fun. If you ask, you charge a booth fee, where does the money go? The money that is generously provided by our sponsors and booth fee all go toward the presentation of the next event. None of the funds that are generated by these events go for Smith County Chamber of Commerce expenses or salaries. It is all used to support events in Smith County and the cities. Ms. Nancy Richardson keeps financial records for these events, and they are available for any.
Yeah, we have a question here.
Yes.
What are the fees for the peddler permits that we charge, twenty dollars?
Twenty-five.
No.
Twenty, I believe.
Is it twenty? Twenty.
And it's not just for this event, it's any event, because the state requires it, so we, for the market fest, everybody's funded it for a year.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the twenty-five dollar peddler's permit fees, just issue peddler's permits to people that are coming to our city to sell their wares, that way there's no money taken out of the.
Second.
Second. It's twenty.
Well, twenty, waive the twenty dollar fee and just issue permits?
If other cities are not charging them, we should act too either.
And we haven't in the past.
Yeah, there's not been anything started.
And, and that should include the market fest?
All, all fees.
All fees, yeah.
No more peddler fees.
No more peddler fees.
So let me ask you, do you charge a booth fee?
I had a.
Yes, and that's what puts the next event up.
That phones for.
All those monies go toward the next event.
So can we, attorney, can we, do you have any thoughts about legally, can we do this?
Could, could I read, may I be allowed to read one thing?
First thing.
State Tennessee coordinated 62 dash thirty. State Tennessee code annotated sixty-two dash thirty dash one-on-four exceptions from the chapter, the chapter does not apply to any corporation, community chess fund or foundation organized or operated exclusively for religious, charitable, scientific, literary, or educational purposes, of which no part of the new earnings benefits private any, of private shareholder. Two, state fairs, arts, craft fairs, other fairs and festivals conducted primarily for amusement or entertainment, wholesale trade fairs, the sale of agricultural, agricultural products, or handcrafted products, a person operating that permanently, and he goes on, the fleet markets, it's, it's already exempt by state-
Well, some of us done our homework on that, thank you for reading that, but I already took care of that.
Called a question.
Called a question for both.
May I just interject one?
No, it was a called a question, Ken.
Called a question, and he's guarding, throwing this down her throat, saying it was required by law, and apparently it's not.
Called a question means we gotta vote.
My attorney, could we hear from our attorney?
Where are we called a question?
Okay, if you don't want to hear her legal opinion from our attorney.
Let him speak.
Called a question.
Mr. Mullins, have you, have you checked into this? Attorney Mullins?
Ken, can you hear me?
Yes.
My mom keeps mewing at me for some reason. I have looked into it, and it's very serviceable, the mayor and I had discussed this issue on the phone, to give you an absolute answer to your question tonight, I can't give you a hundred percent answer to it, the way the mayor proposed the question to me, and what opened up, no, based on what she said, I think your ordinance does require you to collect a fee, now, furthermore, the law that I was sent, that I thought applied to this issue, and I'm not one hundred percent sure if it still applies to it, the gentleman's speaking, and I, I can't, I'm terrible with names, I can't remember his name, I don't know what law he's referring to, I'm not saying it's not a law, but I, to really give you a formal opinion at this moment in time, I can't really, because I've told the mayor on the phone, whenever I talk to her, there's other portions of the statute that require a peddler's permit to come into place, like, the, the statute that I read personally, that say that the event has to be taking, taking up a tax on e- each day, and that was my question, because if, if the event's not taking up a tax, then necessarily a peddler's permit isn't required, in my opinion of the statute I read, that was the one statute that I was provided, so to give you a really formal opinion, I don't, I don't know that you necessarily have to take up a peddler's permit, I did see that there was one exception, as to the statute I read, that you weren't required to have a peddler's permit if you were selling your own agricultural goods, and that was goods that you actually made. Now, as far as, like I said, these exceptions that this gentleman's bringing up, I would need to do further research on that.
Let me, let me ask you if you-
We're, we called a question. There's Roberts Rule of Order, Mayor, we have to vote.
But there is a law here, so this is the question, you just don't want to, I mean, we have to have a peddler's permit.
The called a question, point order.
Can, let me finish, please, we can weigh the cost, if that's what you want, but they do have to have.
That's exactly what I said.
So you-
We still issue the permit, but don't charge a fee.
Yep.
That was the motion.
Exactly. Listen up.
Okay, we will, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now we're gonna vote, now we're gonna vote. That was voting on called a question, now we're gonna vote on his motion.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, did you want to address that tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
That's the bid that Mr. Jones talked about.
Oh, hold on, just a minute, we do have a bid, we haven't, we haven't done that, Mr. Jones, what is it again?
It was the one for the future alley water main that Mr.-
Okay, yeah, we have, Mr. Jones have to vote on this, do we want to take that bid or not?
Was it on the agenda?
Yes, it was.
I said, was it, I didn't think it was-
It was, it was covered in engineering report.
So that's not on the actual agenda?
So you have to, you have to add it.
So we can do it.
So, well, we can add it to the agenda, we can vote, so.
All right, motion to add it to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we motioned to add it to the agenda, are you all in favor?